Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge. Welcome. I hope we will stay on task because this meeting looks like it's gonna be a marathon, so. Let's stay on task and move forward. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Did you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. All right, communications proposals from the commissioners. Do you have any?
Did he give me the thumbs up? Okay, sorry. Mr. Mayor, we've been getting a lot of feedback from Helena residents who have been provided yard and waste composting services by local businesses. Because of a 33-year-old ordinance, the City of Helena is the sole provider of a solid waste disposal services in Helena. But we currently don't offer compost pickup services and the private sector has stepped up to address that need. I guess I'm wondering, rather than creating a new level of governmental bureaucracy, why not update the ordinance to reflect and support those businesses who have already seen the need and addressed it? I believe three other communities in Montana have similar approaches. And the customers that we've been hearing from sound very happy to pay for these needed services. No study, no RFP necessary. And small business is able to create jobs within our community without additional an additional layer of taxes, assessments, and bureaucracy. To me, that seems pretty straightforward. And I'd like to see if there's any interest in this body to consider an update of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. While I also think it's straightforward, but I was still want to hear from the legal entity, whether we have any, whether there's anything there where whether we're on the street and there. So, Madam Manager, would you, is there any way we can find out from the City Attorney where, what the legal remedication for such an idea?
Mayor, Commissioners, the team is preparing a administrative update to you all on options that would result in improvements and allow for an RFP that had been discussed. There's no reason we couldn't add in this alternative of revising the code, as has been suggested by Commissioner Logan. Now, whether or not it's legal is the second question. And we'll provide that analysis when we complete that administrative review. I know the team is anticipating it for the next meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any other communications or comments from the Commission?
Well, can I just ask a quick, so when you say next meeting, that's Wednesday, the 30th?
No, thank you. The next administrative meeting would be in July, the first one in July, on July 7.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to voice my support for this additional option included in those being brought to the Commission, especially when it comes to composting. I think more is more and it's not something that we are currently doing. I also think that if we're going to be really moving in a community-wide effort in terms of our sustainability goals, it's not just city operations, but really what we're doing as a community as a whole. And I think that by eliminating these sorts of opportunities for community members to compost in an efficient and well, and I guess in a manner that works best for them, I hate to, I don't think it's smart for us to stop that as of now. So I'm looking forward to those options and fully support, including that in what is brought to us from staff.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, maybe a question and a comment on that. So the question, given that we're moving towards some sort of discussion in a couple of weeks, there's been ideas thrown around of anything from an expedited RFP or RFQ to a full-on repeal to maybe some, something in between. Are we sending out our cease and desist letters? Are we stopping businesses from collecting as of now? And do we have plans to stop them before the Commission reaches a solution if it thinks it's gonna reach one?
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the letter has not been sent yet.
Okay, I guess, you know, however you all are managing that, but just my one out of five thought is if we're trying to move towards something, it might behoove us to be a little cautious with sending that out. Much of the discussions that I got in correspondence I got was ratcheted up by the article. Correct or incorrect? That was in the news, or not the newspaper, but the television news this weekend where people were somewhat worried. I too support some sort of, you know, ordinance fixed. I've kicked it around with a few people. I don't know that we would need to go whole hog and get rid of the 33-year-old ordinance necessarily, but there's definitely seems like a nexus between allowing enterprises that the city is choosing not to, rather than blocking those market entrants out. I think we would want to keep open the idea, though, that if the city did decide after a you know, year and a half wasted study that maybe the city expands these into the city's solid waste, similar to the recycling program, rather than having sort of inefficient multiple businesses doing it. There's a reason we do trash collection for residential as a city. So, you know, there's probably a way to bridge it where you allow someone to do it individually, but not actually eliminate the ordinance, because what that would do is eliminate the city's ability to be its sole source provider of residential garbage collection, which would be a very bad idea and would actually probably cost residents a lot more money. And composting services are costing residents more money than if we expanded it as a city program. So if we are gonna look at some sort of allow people to continue, we certainly, I think, want to keep the idea that it would be a fully integrated city service at some point in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Any others?
Mayor, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the larger issues that we still need to ensure occurs within the city, whenever a new business starts, they must get a business license. Part of the conversation with new businesses often is around whether or not they can operate and how they can operate within the city when they actually apply for their business license. As I understand it, this business is still working on getting a license or may not have one.
Thank you. Any others? If not, we'll move along. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, nothing to report this evening.
Report of the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, on Wednesday night, we'll be providing an update on the situation on our water conservation requests and very much appreciate the community in conservation. We're seeing record consumption and as reflected in the record weather we're having here and much of the Pacific Northwest is also seeing such a large heat wave. So I want to make sure and say thank you all for your efforts to provide conservation within your home and work time. Also, we'll provide to you an update on our overall operators and our staffing needs and certainly encourage anyone in the community who is water operator certified to let us know your interest in potentially being a city employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Harlow Schalk. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Denise Roth Barber. You have the floor, Ms. Barber.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I'm happy to give a super quick report out from the Helena Citizens Commission, Citizens Council. I'd like to remind the Commission of our budget recommendation document. Hope you've had a chance to look that over as you've gone over the the budget. We'd like to also thank Rachel very much for giving the update last, at our last meeting, which was last week, on the Commission and the City Manager's strategic goals and the budgeting process. That was and we're pleased to report that we have a full board still, which is, you know, 28 people for for each of the seven districts and that many people have signed on to run for elections this November. So we're continuing, we're looking forward to continuing to work with the city as a full-fledged organization. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Regular item 7A. Consider a resolution adopting preliminary budgets, budgets, budgeted authorities, and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, and setting the salary for municipal court judge, Madam Harlow Schalk and/or Director Danielson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Underneath the public hearings this evening, you'll see there are quite a few. Many of them do not result in increases and many of them are fundamentally required in order to move forward. This one is 7A and it's related to the salary for the municipal court. This separate item within the preliminary budget and budget authority, as well as the appropriation for the fiscal year must be adopted separately from the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands online. I have no written public comment. Appears no one in chambers is here to comment on this item.
Any final discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Commissioner.
Move to approve a resolution adopting preliminary budgets, budget authorities, and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, and setting the salary for municipal court judge.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Can I just ask a quick procedural question? I'm having a hard time getting my packet to upload here. So can we just walk through, kind of just generally, all the public hearings that we have on our on our agenda for today? Just walk through procedurally where, where we're at and where we're gonna take amendments?
We'll take amendments after, after this, the approval of the preliminary budget.
Okay, so it's item B that we're gonna start?
Roger, yes.
Okay, thanks. I just apologize. I have, my computer is just trying to upload the whole document, so it's just taking a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Sorry, I'm just looking over at the City Attorney and just making sure that we're good to go on voting on this.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize. I'm a little lost as well. My understanding is 7A is adopting the preliminary budget and setting a salary for municipal court judge for FY '22. And if there were any proposed motions, now would be the time. Of course, there are procedures in the bylaws to go back after that budget is approved, but it's a little bit more difficult.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if maybe the motion could be withdrawn, perhaps, and then we could actually, City Manager, does that sound okay to you, that we could procedurally go through?
My apologies, yes.
So I would be happy to withdraw that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I think we need the motion in second, right? Then we can, then we can all start the party.
That's right. I'm sorry, you're right, Commissioner Halliday. We do need the motion on the table to then amend, but just before we vote on that motion.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear, I'm withdrawing the vote. The motion still stands for opening. It's been seconded by Commissioner Dean. So we're all clear. Vote has been withdrawn at this point on that motion.
Right. Okay.
And Mayor, I just, because if I'm confused, it makes me think that perhaps the public is confused. So we sped through public comment in this public hearing. And I do want to just make sure that we are giving the public the opportunity to give public comment before we start taking votes on amendments, if that's of interest.
That is what we will do, Commissioner Lachlan. So we'll open the floor. Any final, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess just briefly before we, I guess, might go back to public comments and before we get into any of the amendments, I just wanted to take amendment to thank the City Manager and the finance staff for all the work that you've done in getting us to this place during this budget cycle. I know that things have been, the financial report for last year was just getting done, and I know that they have put in a lot of effort. I'm really excited about the budget that's been presented. And I think it's gonna put us on a path of long-term success and I'm very excited to see it aligning with the strategic outcomes that the Commission adopted. So just grateful for all the effort and then also grateful to the public for all of the comments that they have provided through Be Heard Helena and other conversations. So just appreciate all the effort.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just also echo those comments and I'd like to say, I'd really like to thank City Manager Harlow Schalk, Director Danielson, and her staff. And I know it's been a challenging year for them. I think they've worked with the Commission and our strategic priorities. They've worked with staff and their needs, and I think they've really done a good job of working with the public through some pretty good interactive tools, the Balancing Act and Be Heard Helena. And I just like to say, I really appreciate that, as well as the work involved, the directors and all the directors of all the departments and their staffs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Okay. Madam Manager, you have any feedback?
No, thank you very much for the support. The the team has worked pretty hard to bring forward to you all a really thoughtful preliminary budget submittal within each of the resolutions presented, as well as the primary adoption preliminary budget. We've intended to be as thoughtful as we can in a quick process, and I wish it had been a year. It's only been eight months. We're pretty excited to be able to have delved as far into this as we could. So thank you, Mayor, and I'll let you open the public hearing of all of these fabulous items. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first up online, I have Mark Judeeman with his hands raised.
Go ahead, Mark. You have the floor, Mr. Judeeman.
Thank you. This is Mark Judeeman. Last name is spelled J-U-E-D-E-M-A-N. Live here in Helena. I am a member of the Citizens Conservation Board and Vice Chair of that board. As you see on your agenda, the last item on the agenda is discussion of the the letter from the CCB to the Mayor and Commissioner, Commissioners. However, that does relate to budget items. And so if you all think it's appropriate that you have this input previous to voting, I'd be happy to discuss at this point. There may be other folks online as well who might have some comments.
Well, as much as I would love to hear, but we have the, it's on the agenda, sir, so I would prefer that we wait for the, for the item.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just hope that no decisions are taken that might be influenced by that letter later.
Mayor Collins, this is Thomas. It sounded to me that Mr. wanted to make specific comments pertaining to item 7A, the adoption of the preliminary budget. And so maybe might be warranted from him at this time for that item.
Okay, Mr. Judeeman?
I will intend to be very brief.
Please, go ahead.
Yes. The first thing is, you know, that there is enthusiastic support from the Citizens Conservation Board for the sustainability-related items that are in the budget. This is a really good budget and supports Helena's efforts towards sustainability and clean energy and so on. So kudos and commendation for all of that. We do have a couple of specific concerns, however. One is that we had hoped to see a one FTE equivalent, one FTE position for the Sustainability Coordinator. In other words, moving from a half-time to a full-time. And I don't believe that that is reflected in the budget. So we do have a concern about that. The second concern is, in the organizational chart, the Sustainability Coordinator has been moved from directly reporting to the City Manager to several levels down in the Department of Public Works. And we are concerned that that reflects a deprioritization of sustainability within the city. And also makes it more difficult for the kind of cross departmental work that the Sustainability Coordinator needs to do. So it seemed to work very well when the Sustainability Coordinator was reporting directly to Manager Harlow Schalk. So this is disappointing. Perhaps if, if moving to another department is appropriate, maybe there are other places such as perhaps the Planning Department that would work better and maintain the independence and cross-discipline work of the Sustainability Coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judeeman. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next online, I have Diana Hammer.
Go ahead, Diana.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much. I'd like to follow on, piggybacking a little bit on Mark Judeeman's comments. I'm the Chair of the Citizens Conservation Board and we really would, we've been so impressed in the last year and a half of the strides the city has been able to make in terms of sustainability. And I think it owes in large part to the efforts of the Sustainability Coordinator and the city staff. And part of that success, we, the CCB believes, as we stated in the letter we sent to you earlier this month, is the result of the Sustainability Coordinator's position in the City Manager's office and his ability to work cross, or interdepartmentally and and make recommendations independently. And we very strongly believe that that position should continue to be located not within a particular department necessarily. Our preference, of course, would be that it remain in the City Manager's office. But as Mark mentioned, perhaps planning could make some sense. So with that, I won't repeat anything else that Mark said, but the Board unanimously supports this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners online, I have Ann Brodsky.
Go ahead, Ann. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And I hate to, I'm also on the Citizen Conservation Board, as I think you all know. And I don't want to repeat what the other, you know, Diana and Mark said. But I do want to highlight why we think this is an important question that we've raised that I think is before you about the Sustainability Coordinator and within the Public Works Department. And specifically, I'm gonna refer to a budget item which we greatly, greatly appreciate. It's, we requested and you, it's in your draft budget to appropriate $60,000 to conduct a feasibility or, excuse me, a strategic plan to implement the Waste Reduction Resolution that you passed that we put forward to you in February. And I have a very, it was never contemplated that that strategic plan would come out of the Public Works Department. And I'm concerned that it would come out of the Public Works Department. I think the Public Works Department does a fabulous job in solid waste management. But we, as a Conservation Board, have met, you know, we talked to the Public Works frequently. I've talked to the City Manager about the subject. We talked to people in the private sector, because as you know, currently, solid waste is handled by both public and private. So there's, you know, there's different interests. And we do know that we know that Public Works has a vision for how waste reduction would occur. And I think it would behoove, I think it would be to the benefit of the community if the strategic plan come out of not Public Works, but perhaps Planning. It's a strategic plan, so Planning. Some other location so that it's, the outcome is not predetermined. And I'm, I'm very concerned that the outcome would be predetermined if it were in the Public Works Department. Again, I don't have my own vision as to what the outcome will be. But I want there to be an independent analysis of options to achieve waste reduction. And I think that's better achieved if the work for that strategic plan happened outside of the Public Works Department. So Planning Department would be one. I might also, two other, one other thing I wanted to mention, that in Bozeman, their Sustainability Coordinator is housed, is situated in a depart, while they're moving towards a Department of Sustainability, they're now in this huge service department. In Missoula, their Sustainability Coordinator is housed in their community development. So again, that's what I have to say right now. We may talk about it another time as the RFP moves forward. I appreciate your time and attention to this. And I'm greatly appreciative that the money is in the budget right now to do that strategic plan so that we can move towards waste reduction and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brodsky. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no further raised hands, and I've received no written public comment online. I see no one in the chambers here to make public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments from the Commission?
Mayor, I'd be happy to begin the amendment process, if that sounds okay.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to amend.
Okay, great. Well, I think before I start, I will just also echo my appreciation to the staff for the budget process, and particularly Director Danielson, for all the work that you and your team have put into this. I also want to thank the Commission for some really robust conversations about the budget and where we stand. And I think, I hope that none of what I'm putting forward today should come as a surprise, right? I think we've actually had conversations about each of these items. So, I just want to, again, thank the Commission and the staff for all the work that they've put into this. So, I first, the first motion I'd like to take is related to the Gulf Fund, but I think more specifically, the restaurant that is owned and operated by the city. As we've talked about, the city of Helena in 2017 issued a $2 million general obligation bond to construct a restaurant and clubhouse for the Bill Roberts Golf Course. This debt was taken really with communication from the former city manager and staff that revenue from the golf course and restaurant operations would cover the debt service and operation expenses. I think we now see and know that that is not necessarily the case. And as the staff now has articulated to the Commission that it is the intention that the general fund would pick up the cost of that debt moving forward into the future to the tune of about $145,000 per year. The budget that we have in front of us reflects a total general fund transfer of $235,000, and this is on top of the general fund transfers that the city made, really with the direction of this Commission last year, which is reflected in FY '20, and then an additional, I think, $240,000 general fund transfer in the current fiscal year. So, in total, about three-quarters of a million dollars has gone to subsidize largely a restaurant that is owned by the city. Now, I think this is probably worth a conversation and a policy discussion about, is this, the desire of the Commission and the city to continue to subsidize this restaurant, or are there other ways that we should be thinking about this? I think that's difficult to do if we continue to provide the level of subsidy that we are in this FY '22 budget. So, before you, I've put together three different options. One is to fully eliminate the transfer. The second is to essentially reduce it by the net of that $145,000 versus the $235,000 currently provided. And then, the third option is to reduce it by essentially assuming that the Commission is not interested in sort of providing a general fund subsidy for the clubhouse and the restaurant, reducing that by the $145,000. So, tonight, I'd like to put forward Option 3, which is to reduce the transfer out by $89,537. And this is what we discussed at our prior meeting, which essentially gets that general fund transfer down to the general obligation debt service, the $145,000. I would say my preference would be, you know, and I think this was communicated, at least I communicated this at our last budget cycle that we had a year ago, that providing a one-time general fund transfer so that the golf course wasn't in the red was something we probably needed to do. I think my hope and intention was that that was a one-time transfer. We've now done it now in two fiscal years, and I think are proposing for a third. So, I feel like this is a middle ground. My understanding is that the city would intend to continue to cover that debt obligation through general fund dollars into future years. So, I think this is basically keeping it at where, my understanding is where the staff would like to at least cover that debt with general fund dollars moving forward. So, with that, I would move to reduce the transfers out of Fund 100 by $89,537, and reduce the inner fund transfer in from Fund 563, the Gulf Fund, by the same amount, $89,537.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Wondering if the city manager might be able to discuss the impact of this amendment on the Gulf Fund and what your take on its impact would be.
The city manager will get her chance to address that. Do we have any further discussion from the Commission? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The most difficult part of the management of an enterprise fund is the ability for an on-demand service to cover a significant amount of debt. And as Commissioner O'Loughlin has pointed out, the addition of debt to the, the restaurant wasn't, is not one that results in an inability of that restaurant to cover itself. So, the, this is first, is the $89,000 is likely not something that they can cover moving forward as an ongoing. And the second, though, is this larger question around policy issue with, which I believe is really the question on the table. Should the city be moving the general fund debt that was actually incurred back to the general fund as opposed to putting it onto the golf course, which was where it was, where it landed? And I understand that the, at the time, the Commission agreed that the restaurant would be able to cover it, and then therefore put forward the general fund as the obligation. But for the obligation through the general fund, the golf course would not have gotten that debt. The second part of the restaurant is the hindrance of the operation to make a full restaurant service happen because of the restrictions in its ability to actually refrigerate and cook. There's no cold storage, and there is not an oven. So, the team is doing an excellent job with basically very minimum, and I'm not sure that that was the intention, that we would ultimately be able to cover that $89,000. Would love to see improvements into the restaurant into the future so that it could be more lucrative, but unfortunately, I don't believe that it is something that could be funded moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I just got one question. What was behind the notion of not having a cold storage and an oven in a restaurant? Can, I mean, can you answer that for me? Because that's the first time I've seen or heard of something of that nature. So, maybe you heard something, you know, that will help us, you know, clear our heads because you built a restaurant without a cold storage, without an oven?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't build it.
No, no, I didn't say you.
We built it together. That was our past. And I think, as I understand, the previous operation, it was cold cuts and sodas, basically, at the end of a day with minimal alcohol service. So, I think the idea was it would duplicate. What it actually is, is something really spectacular that is just underfunded and underoutfitted, I should say, for the outcome that it could actually be. And that's really resulted in what potential could fully come out of that location.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Yeah, maybe just a question on the math. I'm looking at the sheet that we were sent with analysis of the impacts of proposed amendments. And when I look at Commissioner O'Loughlin's amendments related to the golf course, it says reduces revenue for golf course $235,000. Fund will end with a negative fund balance of $110,542. So, is there a corresponding number, since I'm too dumb to do the math of what it would be if the revenue was reduced instead by the $89,000, and whether that number still ends up in the red if the number was only $89,000, or is the golf course actually coming out in the black?
Mayor, I can, I think, maybe answer that, just because I did the math, and my impression is that it would come and it would be in the black now, roughly $36,000.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? At this time, we're entertaining public comments. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no raised hands online. I have received no written public comment. There appears to be no one in chambers to make public comment.
Okay. It was moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean. No? Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
You still have the floor, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'll go ahead and move to my second one, which, again, I think we had a good conversation about the dynamics around Kendrick Legion Field. So, as you know, the preliminary budget currently reflects a proposed expenditure of a quarter million dollars to install artificial turf at Kendrick Legion Field. We heard during, to, heard from the city staff during our budget meetings that this proposed capital expenditure is tied to the potential of bringing in a collegiate league baseball team. We, in a previous meeting, have supported Legion using the field, but did ask the staff to consider or continue to work with the collegiate league to see whether or not a schedule was possible. The staff has indicated that in order to make a schedule possible, it would likely require artificial turf in order to use the fields for more days. During that conversation, I think we posed some questions about the extent to which, if this is ultimately tied to bringing in an expedition, or bringing in a collegiate league baseball team, the extent to which we can partner with that league. I think this is pretty consistent with what you see in other municipalities of working on a public and private partnership on raising the funds for this. We know we have a lot of demands on the general fund, and what I would like to propose tonight is to reduce that transfer by half of what is being proposed, with really the direction to the staff to continue to work with the collegiate league baseball team and thinking through what expenditures need to be made in order for them to bring in what I believe is a for-profit venture. So, with that, I would move to reduce transfers out of Fund 100 by $125,000, and similarly, reduce transfers in to the Fund 440 by $125,000, which would then, we are still making a significant general fund transfer into the capital fund of $1,266,000.
Second.
Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, no raised hands, no written public comment, no one in chambers.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a quick logistics question for you. Are you planning on having the city manager or finance staff talk a little bit about the impact of the changes after each one, or would you like us to ask questions for that on each of these?
I think we're addressing it individually.
So, we should ask?
Yes, please.
I, well, in that case, I would ask that the city manager maybe talk about the impact of this change.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. The opportunity to expand into public-private partnerships is the policy question, I think, on the table, and we'll always continue to seek those opportunities, whether or not it's realistic for us to use the field itself as much as we would like to. And ultimately, would they be willing to make the large investment to help bring on those additional improvements that need to happen in order for us to use that grass as much as we would like to? Remains to be seen, and they have so far not been able to accommodate that request. And so, we will, of course, continue to seek out public-private partnership in the larger picture. Obviously, as a policy, we want to seek as many ways as we can. But the, so, by removing this, this reduces the opportunity for us to do it. Having half doesn't result in a full opportunity, and it would be different if we already had that relationship in place, and we just do not. So, what the ultimate impact would be if we weren't funded in this line item, we would have to look at potentially doing other improvements on the field. And right now, we don't have anything on the field, so it would be potentially a loss of our, an impact that would be of potential negative. So, we would love to actually see the field improved in this way. It would also reduce some of those longer-term operating costs that result from doing maintenance on a grass field. Thanks.
I know this weekend, we had a lot of players in town. All the hotels were booked up. In fact, I got a few calls required from parents of those players to see if we use their RVs around the park, because in all the hotels in Helena were literally booked up. All the RV parks were literally booked up. So, that was great business for the hotel industry, the restaurants, you know, everything in Helena. So, I think supporting the field, supporting the efforts, it's not a bad thing.
Mayor?
Any other comments? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was just wondering if I could ask a quick question to the city manager. So, my understanding is that if we continue to provide sole use to Legion, that the intent is not, not to install artificial turf. Is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner. The, as we, yeah, we could not accommodate a second run of, in full use on that, on that field without the artificial turf. We would have only the opportunity to have the one exclusive use and wouldn't be able to use it in the off-hours. That's one of the harder times that we've had.
Yeah. So, Mayor, my, so my question was if, and I think that there is a fair amount of thoughts and opinions on whether or not Legion should continue to be the sole user of the field. My understanding is if Legion continues to be the sole user of the field, the intent is, the artificial turf is not needed. My understanding is if Legion continues to be the sole user of the field, the intent is the artificial turf is not needed.
Right.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is correct. We are anticipating that low volume and low usage when we would be able to rest the field between use.
Okay, so the artificial turf is really tied to bringing in a for-profit collegiate team?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the question around the use of the artificial turf is not only to, you know, offer up more use on the field, but additionally, that longer-term reduced maintenance onto onto the grass itself and and having to rest it, which is required with light large use.
Just a question. I know Mr. I don't know if Ms. Pinozzo is on or not. Are we paying for the maintenance of the field while Baybridge or Legion, excuse me, uses it, or is that built into their use agreement?
Ms. Pinozzo, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. There are portions of the field that they are maintaining, and there are portions that our staff are maintaining, no matter the water consumption is still on ours. So there are portions of the lease that are are assigned to the field to the league. Thank you. But the total is not completely burdened onto them. They have done a significant amount of work on our if you were to look at the the building itself and the improvements there, but the the field itself, the actual work on the field is is supervised and managed by our team.
I appreciate that. And I said field, and when I said field, I mean, grass, and I appreciate that you expanded it to all of Kendrick Legion field. What I mean is the grass itself. The watering, the maintenance, the mowing, all that good stuff. Who is actually paying for that right now under the use agreement?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll research that question and get you the details on that contract.
I mean, I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, you know, we have people in town irrespective whether or not we have this turf, right? People people have the heads and beds in the motels because they want to use Kendrick Legion Field. What we're talking about is an increase in use of the field and paying something for that increase in use. The Expedition League has shown incredible excitement of getting in there for going on four years now. And if they are that interested, then there's no reason to not ask them if they're willing to put up a monetary investment. If not, we get the same exact situation we have today, which is the exciting weekend you just witnessed of hotels completely full in Helena. Right? So that works out screamingly there, one way or the other. We also know that Expedition League and Legion have had a really, really hard time getting along in just figuring out how their schedules are going to work in this process. Let's keep our fingers crossed. So why not put the onus on them and say, let's negotiate this? If they don't end up coming in the end, we don't need to spend 250,000 putting turf on a field that we know doesn't need it. So it makes sense to reduce this and ask them to be a participant if they want to come in and put this for-profit Expedition League.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the city manager, and I I don't expect her to have an answer right now, but I'm wondering if it could be researched as to how much water would be conserved by moving to turf. And I know that she wouldn't know that off the top of her head, but if we could research that and find out, that would be excellent.
Any other finer comments from the commission? Okay. We have public comments, Commissioners. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean, no. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Okay, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the third motion that I have is related to the Civic Center. And I just want to just start this conversation with, I think, the way that we almost always have to start a conversation about the Civic Center. I think the City Commission and previous city commissions have been a strong supporter of the Civic Center. We have provided a general fund transfer to subsidize Civic Center operations for years now. I support the Civic Center, and I support the ongoing general fund transfer. That said, we did receive an updated preliminary budget that reflected significant higher levels of revenue generated by the Civic Center. I think somewhere around 300,000 more above what we received in the original preliminary budget. And roughly three and a half times the amount that was projected for the current fiscal year. However, the general proposed general fund subsidy continues to sit at 450,000. Now, I think that there could be merit to reducing the Civic Center subsidy, given that they are projecting revenue above and beyond what they received even prior to the pandemic. But that is not what I am proposing today. I am simply proposing to to maintain their general fund transfer at the past two years of 360,000. So with that, I will move to reduce the transfer out of Fund 100 by 90,000. Similarly, reduce transfers in by 90,000 of Fund 211 and reduce the capital outlay by 90,000 in Fund 211.
Second?
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
I'll ask the question of the manager.
Please.
Of this to the Civic Center's operation.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to ask Director Danielson if she could come up to the microphone as well and answer the question. As I understand it, this budget in order for it to balance had to had had to receive this additional transfer. If it does not receive this additional transfer, the operations will need to be cut by 90,000. Just to under I'll go ahead and turn that over to Director Danielson to confirm.
You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Should the general fund transfer be reduced by 90,000 to the fund? The the fund as it stands now with the 450,000 transfer has revenues or excuse me expenditures exceeding revenues by 150,000. If you reduce the transfer and the and the capital outlay, that would maintain the same negative 151,000 of expenditures exceeding revenues. One of the things that was proposed in this particular budget and is is a lot of the deferred maintenance of the Civic Center. And so it was explored myself with the with the manager and the and the Director of Parks and Recreation on reducing that transfer after those revised revenue projections increased. However, if you look at the targeted reserve for the fund, it still is not meeting its targeted reserve, even with the increased transfer from the general fund to address some of those deferred capital and operating maintenance needs of the Civic Center. I don't know at this time if ARPA funds could help supplement this particular fund. We're working on our revenue loss projections right now. I think it could be a potential avenue to support the Civic Center with those revenue loss projections from that ARPA funding. The ARPA funding went to a particular fund. We did receive our first initial four point some million dollars, and it's it it's receded. However, we haven't at this time determined how to spend that money, but part of that part of the ARPA funding is to calculate revenue losses. So we could potentially divert some of that money to support the Civic Center.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for Ms. Danielson. So when the, I'll say revised preliminary budget came out and the assumed revenue increased for the Civic Center, not quite commensurately, but in the capital outlay, it went up about 200,000 as well. Is that correct?
Yes, when the Civic Center manager revised the revenue projections, I had originally worked on this budget when they didn't have a manager present and reduced it so that the balance the fund would balance. The manager then later came and gave some specific revenue projections on number of events that he believed was going to happen and the number of ticket sales that would happen and wanted to reinstate those capital expenditures at their original ask.
Commissioner?
Yeah. So I mean, in part, the capital outlay, right? Since for for this odd reason, right, we treat the Civic Center different than any other fund in that it gets this big general fund subsidy. If in a given year, the Civic Center actually beats, if if revenues exceed expenditures, unlike many funds that just get sort of a chunk of money from the general fund, we don't revert it, it it rolls into the Civic Center's reserves.
That is correct.
And then in bad years, the Civic Center has historically backfilled when it when the when Troy decides, oh, we're going to need to do this, or Christie decides that we need to do this. They can draw from those reserves that they we've allowed to bank rather than reverting back to the general fund because they're just a general fund subsidy in the at the end of the day there, or at least they're never eclipsing the general fund subsidy, right? So it's it's just the taxpayers' money. We just keep it in this fund. So why wouldn't we do something similar here where the Civic Center would say, hey, we're going to do this deferred maintenance and whatnot? When our revenue comes in so spectacularly high, like we're expecting it to, which will be an awesome year for us, rather than sort of pre prefixing it, right? And then having to sort of do this extra step of subsidy. Right? We could just roll that 90,000 back like the commissioner is saying and roll back the capital outlay and thereby say, you know, if you guys want to spend that money this year, if that's what you want to do, take it from reserves, just like it's always been done in the past for the Civic Center, rather than sort of pre-gaming a subsidy.
That is an option, and I did have that conversation with the Civic Center manager about those revenue projections and increasing those capital outlays. And should the commission approve the appropriations as it stands, it definitely gives them the legal level of authority to expend those funds. However, I did explain to the Civic Center manager and the Parks and Recreation Director that just because they have the legal ability to do so, doesn't mean that they have the funds to do so. And this is a particular fund that is is of high interest to both myself and the Parks and Recreation Director to monitor their expenditures and make sure that their revenues are going to cover. Your option to just do an amendment or a budget adjustment later in the year, should those revenues come in, is definitely an option to to contain that monitoring.
Thank you, Ms. Danielson. Or Director Danielson, I apologize. Do we have any other comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands, no written public comment, and no one in chambers.
Mayor, may I make just maybe one quick comment before we vote?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. So thank you for the information, and I think that I imagine that we're going to have a fair amount of conversations around the ARPA funds, given that that isn't reflected in this budget today. So I think that does certainly give us another opportunity to look at, you know, how how the Civic Center is doing. I will say, you know, when we first originally got the preliminary budget, you know, that that capital outlay was not reflected, right? It was it was deferred. I think that it's it's fair and reasonable for us to say, okay, Civic Center, we are going to continue to provide a significant general fund transfer to support operations, but also thinking about how the Civic Center can can look at its revenue coming in and its expenditures going out. And I think, you know, it's reasonable to say I I also should note, this will continue to provide 111,000 in capital expenditures to the Civic Center. So this isn't zeroing out their capital outlay. What they had proposed was 201,000. This is simply saying, we're going to return back to where we were with the general fund transfer in the last two fiscal years, given that your revenue is now back to levels that you saw pre-pandemic. I think that's reasonable. And I think that, you know, this will continue to give them a budget that you know, will allow them to you know, to to do some of the deferred maintenance that, you know, that they have discussed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Question for the city manager, Director Danielson. So with the ARPA funds, even if we do adopt the current preliminary budget as it's presented and then decide that you 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 evaluate that we can use those ARPA dollars to cover the losses. Just because the appropriations authority is there, doesn't mean that we actually are going to spend that money if if the ARPA funds can cover the losses, correct? That is correct, Commissioner. Just as we would do and had done last year with savings within funds, if we have them as a result of a revenue return or revenue coverage, we would bring them back for a conversation with you all.
Okay. Any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
You still have the floor, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. So my next one is is related to the commission priorities and the commission's support for the Housing Trust Fund. We established this trust fund late last year, and as part of that reflected, you know, a recommendation to the city manager to at least start the budget process with a general fund transfer of 100,000. We in the state of Montana are somewhat limited in ways that we can access and deposit funds into the Housing Trust Fund. We can certainly sell surplus property, and if it's not encumbered, that deposits or the proceeds of those sales would be deposited in the Housing Trust Fund. But other than that, we are somewhat limited. I don't think a day goes by that I don't have someone talk to me about housing. It is a growing issue in this community, and it's a growing issue across the state. I think when we started these conversations about a Housing Trust Fund more than a year ago, I think the hope was that we could potentially get ahead of some of the issues that we knew were bubbling up in Bozeman and Missoula. I think we're there. And I think that this has been a particular challenge for families who are living on lower incomes. And Mayor, I can imagine that, you know, I hear many, many instances where even just the simple reunification of families is rests on stable and affordable housing. And we have we have significant challenges here in Helena. This is a tool that I think we know can work and is a way for the and is a way for the city to leverage some resources to access other dollars for the construction and preservation of affordable housing. So I want to thank the city staff for their work. I know that they are currently in the process of drafting the rules for the use of these funds. And I think we have the opportunity to continue to invest dollars in future budgets that reflects, I think, the priority of this Commission in addressing housing issues in our community. We are, at this point, committing significant general fund dollars to a restaurant, well above what has been proposed in the preliminary budget to the Housing Trust Fund in this next fiscal year. So I think that this is an opportunity for us to invest. Now, I have been concerned about where we sit with the general fund. And so, as you probably could tell, my previous three amendments are reflected in the amount that I had proposed here. This Commission has decided to continue to subsidize the restaurant and the Civic Center. That is the prerogative of this Commission. So with that, my proposal tonight for an additional general fund transfer into the Housing Trust Fund will reflect the amount that we reduced for the capital outlay to the Kendrick Field. So with that, I would provide, or I would amend the budget to increase transfers out by 125,000 from Fund 100 and increase transfers in to Fund 229 by 125,000.
Second.
And finally, discussion from the Commission.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just echo those comments. You know, I thought about whether I should move to just amend this to up it by 210,000. But I won't, I won't do that as just a dog and pony show here. But, you know, we agreed this evening to give the golf course about $120,000 of money more than it needed, right? It's zeroed out at about the 90,000 that Commissioner Loughlin suggested bringing it down, plus, you know, about 36 on top of that. So that gets you to just over 120, right? So we just decided to give the golf course an extra 120,000, according to our numbers. Then we went ahead and put $90,000 of funding into the Civic Center above and beyond, right? You know, last year, we talked about, sort of, show me your budget, I'll show you your values, right? We've got a chance to up affordable housing in this city. We're choosing additional surplus funds to golf. We have the chance to up affordable housing in this city. We're choosing to increase the Civic Center subsidy, despite it not being necessary in this budget. So that is our values, and I won't make you vote against the increase, but I think we have to reflect on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? You know, and just for me, I know the importance of affordable housing, and I know it's, this is a good tool that we need to fund. And we know how tough it's been around the country. And if we in Helena can alleviate some of that stress, I will fully support it, and I intend to support this. Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm wondering if the City Manager can remind us how much with some of the CARES dollars and other funds that we have put into this so far this year, obviously not in this particular budget, but within those other funds.
You have the floor, Madam.
Thank you, Mayor. 1.385 million currently rests within the Affordable Trust, and that includes, excuse me, 1.285 million, I'm sorry. 1.285 million is in the trust. We have 100,000 that would go, that was a part of the original preliminary budget. This would add another 125,000 onto that as well.
And Mr. Mayor, just one more follow-up. I know the staff has been working on what the process looks like for applying for these funds and what kind of projects it would fund. Do we have a timeline as to when we might see those final guidelines, for lack of a better term, and projects that we could start looking at?
Hi, Mayor, I'll hop in here. The, the team has been working on and provided an update to the Commission after Cara, our housing coordinator started. She's been working with a team of partners in the community on some drafted rules, and then there's also been a lot of conversation with our neighboring communities. We are not outpacing other communities who are further ahead of us either. So what I would say is that there are communities who have been further along than we are in Montana, and yet we're still at a same, at a similar pace. We had talked about bringing those forward in the fall to all of you, if that is still the timing that we're looking at.
And Mayor, maybe just a comment on that. Commissioner Dean, I've had some really good conversations with the city of Missoula, and while they are, they go through their fiscal year budget a little later than we do, but my understanding is they're likely proposing a pretty sizable general fund transfer into their Housing Trust Fund on top of what I understand is about a $1.7 million sale of city property that will also be deposited on top of the 750,000 that they did in the previous year. So I think what we're proposing tonight is not, yes, we did, we have been able to deposit significant amount of one-time funds. I think my question to this Commission is, is there an ongoing commitment to the trust fund? I think what's being proposed here is, you know, below what I think most municipalities are considering as far as prioritizing this issue.
Maybe a clarification question for the managers. Well, is, I think the other day with the Balanced Budget Tool, or whatever it's called, didn't we do another 400,000 also? Wouldn't that take the balance to like 1.6 some odd?
Sorry, I'm slowing down just to make sure that I grabbed that last number. Thank you, Commissioner. So yes, that would be an additional 400,000, so I'll revise that number to you all again. Sorry, my apologies. Again, the current balance is 1.285 million plus 400,000, which results in a total of 1.685. So 1.685 that's currently set aside and for the Housing Trust Fund from the one-time dollars plus 100 that was suggested in the preliminary, and then adding in this additional 125,000 would result in 1.5 million being set aside, 1.55 million being set aside within the Housing Trust Fund. I would note that as a municipality, a lot of the other organizations that we're talking to, their population size is quite a bit larger than our own, and this 1.55 investment is pretty terrifically large in comparison to what others have been able to do if you were to adopt the $125,000 additional.
And I'll just say as a comment, Mr. Mayor, you know, we can't, you can't fund these type of funds off one. Let's hope we never have another COVID. But you can't expect to fund your Housing Trust Fund off of a COVID and a federal bailout. You can't, you can't expect to just keep getting one-time dollars in there. You've got to show a commitment to actually caring about affordable housing. Right? We didn't, we didn't have unanimity when we created this fund. We've had split votes on every attempt to put money in this fund, and I'm anticipating we'll have a split vote again on getting more dollars into this fund. But the only way you're going to actually continue this fund into the future is with an actual political will to care about affordable housing to the tune of funding it during the budget process, not just in hoping that massive settlements come in or large infusions of dollars come in from someplace else. And so this, you know, this ultimately only breaks down to about a $225,000 general fund transfer this year, which sorely lags behind others and is, you know, only going to make a drop because we managed to put some other money in there. You can see from other funds that we managed to put together, like the Solar Fund. Only reason that's running today is because of a large settlement, right? It's been so difficult to get money in there. Thankfully, we're looking at another 60,000 this year. But it's very difficult to fund these funds long-term, and these are our chances. And so this is, this is where the rubber meets the road in terms of supporting affordable housing. So I appreciate your words of support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? And I apologize, I was shortly kicked off the internet, but I'm back on. Did we go through public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have not gone through public comment.
Okay. Any final comments from the Commission? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I have no raised hands online. I've received no written public comment, and there's no one in chambers looking to speak on this matter.
Madam Manager, any final comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I do not have any further comments.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. You still have the floor, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. So the final two are related to the conversations we've had around ongoing revenue versus ongoing expenditures. In the past, the City Commission has included contingent language to approve a cost of living adjustment. Once final, the current fiscal year revenues come in and the staff and finance department has a sense of ongoing revenue versus ongoing expenditures. This was a conversation that we had during one of our budget, our budget meetings, where the staff, I think, initially proposed this type of contingency language. Part of the reason why, in the past, the Commission has done this as just contingency languages, language, rather than pulling it out and then, or not approving a cost of living adjustment, is that we would have to go through a budget hearing and another budget process into the future. So this gives the staff the ability to implement these two items once they've finalized FY '21 and have a better sense of FY '22 projections. So I've got two here. They are related to the new FTE. I will just acknowledge that this motion reflects all of the new FTE, though about half of those new FTE are funded through the general fund. I'm certainly open if the Commission would prefer doing this a different way, but I think given the significant increase in new city employees with, you know, not a lot of sort of comprehensive conversation amongst the Commission, I thought it would, it would be worthwhile to just include the full 11.38 new FTE. The second is, represents half of the cost of living adjustment. And again, this largely comes from the City Manager and Finance Department's proposals to us early on in the budget process. So this is contingency language reflecting 1.1% cost of living adjustment. So with that, I'll go ahead and move the first one. I'll move to include contingency language that the hiring of 11.38 new FTE will be contingent upon final FY 2021 revenue calculations and updated FY 2022 revenue projections showing ongoing general fund revenue will fund ongoing general fund expenditures.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Commission? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just reflecting back on the suggested amendment that was brought forward as a result of the request on to clarify the difference and distinction between a balanced budget and a structurally balanced budget. What you have in front of you is a balanced budget. I did not, as the manager bring to you, the 1.1% or the caveat of the revenue receipt because I believe we've submitted a very very comprehensive understanding to the staffing as well as a pretty low-risk quest. And wanted to make sure and reflect on that, that point. I also would say there are a variety of other reasons in which we've brought forward the 2.2% increase for our team and is detailed within the budget. The positions themselves and the alignment of those positions within the longer-term work plan and the expectations of the Commission have been lined out in the work plan and then within the document itself. The robust conversations around positions and whether or not they reflect the Commission's policy priorities are always a good conversation to have. But in order for the city to move forward on the variety of requests that the Commission has, as well as some of the larger priorities you all have brought forward, I would need to fund those positions. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
For the City Manager, I wonder if you can talk a little bit, you talked about the, why the positions are important for carrying out the policy proposals and priorities of the Commission. Can you talk about why you believe the funding, the cost of living adjustment is important within this budget?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. If you were to go to the budget document itself, this is the first time the city is actually documenting a method for and clarifying what a cost of living adjustment should reflect. As discussed, the cost of living in Helena has risen quite a bit. The intention is to level out what is a lagging staff overall cost to live within the city as well within Lewis and Clark County. Our Human Resources Director, Renee McMahon, and who has been on with us now, I believe, three months, almost six months, four months. Time is flying for me. I know that, I think, one of you suggested I'd been here a year. So I know that that's the reality of my. So I know that that's the reality of, of my, of my space. And what we've, when creating and setting the cost of living, it, it's an increase that's intended to ensure that compensation maintains competitiveness. And right now, we, like many other employers in the community, are having a very hard time attracting and bringing on good competition into our employee and in our positions overall. We this year used the quarterly census of employment and wages as well as the Bureau of Business and Economic Research. And last, the Montana Regional MLS housing data to reflect on. And according to the Montana Labor and Statistics, the cost of homes in Helena rose by 6.8% from 2018 to 2019 and 2019 to 20 at 10.25%. The Montana Division of Bureau of Labor Statistics is maintaining data for the Mountain Division and being very conservative, the Mountain Division has identified at 2.17% as the increase for the area based on the CPI. So the 2.1 or the 2.2% that is suggested is the most conservative. We also had a look at the increase in, overall, the closer review of the Lewis and Clark County increase in weekly wages as well as a comparison government agency.
Thank you, Madam Hall Shook. Do we have any other comments or questions from the Commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no written public comment, no raised hands and no one in chambers.
Any final comments from the, from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
You still have the floor, Commissioner?
Great. Thanks, Mayor. This is the final one. So I will move to include contingency language that the second half of the proposed 2.2% cost of living adjustment, in other words, 1.1% will be contingent upon final FY 2021 revenue calculations and updated FY 2022 revenue projections showing ongoing general fund revenue will fund ongoing general fund expenditures.
It's been moved and seconded. Final comments from the Commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no written public comment, no raised hands, no one in chambers wishing to make public comment.
Any final comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I would just note a couple of comments. I think that the cost of living adjustment, as the manager did know, in, in connection with our, our previous conversation, it, it is getting more and more expensive just to live here, live everywhere, but particularly here. And a remaining competitive is essential if we are going to provide the best services possible. And so I will not be supporting this, but appreciate the idea behind it. But I, I do think that this is one of the most important things in terms of being the only municipality that's really competing with state government as well in terms of workforce here locally. And, and I think that providing that cost of living adjustment is really important if we want to retain and recruit a, a good workforce for the city of Helena.
Thank you. Madam Manager, any final comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This budget does, that has been brought to, brought to you is a preliminary budget. Does include these increases. It's balanced. It improves our staffing and the capacity. But it also is, does result in ongoing one-time dollars being made available. These are costs over and above and yet also much necessary improvements into the pay within our team. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is something that we did at least two or three years. It's even been, I think, if I remember right, backdated in years. It's just a way of making sure that you actually are hitting your revenue targets. So it's a responsible thing to do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
Do we have any other Commissioners? I wish us to present a motion to amend.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I will go ahead and be happy to move through mine. So first, I would move to amend to implement the volunteer sidewalk replacement program with $150,000 from Fund 201. This is one of the three programs that was presented by staff a couple of weeks ago after our sidewalk working group sessions. I had asked, you know, for, for what is the, the recommendation, the professional recommendation from staff to, to really meet the priorities that were discussed in a, a manner that is achievable. And, and these were the recommendations. And so this first one is $150,000 for the volunteer sidewalk replacement program from Fund 201. And I did make the motion, but started talking, so I'm sorry if I didn't give a chance for a second if there is one.
Is there a second? No second.
We'll move on.
Maybe just a clarification question. It says from inter-fund loan. Where is that loan coming from?
I have corrected the motion to Fund 201 after confirming with staff that that was the intention.
That's streets?
Yes.
So it's $150,000 increase to streets?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any final discussion from the Commission?
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to hear from the City Manager on where we sit with streets.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission before we, we put the City Manager on? You have the floor, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As with any increase, I will always ask my fantastic Finance Director, Ms. Danielson, to come up and to the microphone as well to talk about the increase and where those dollars ultimately lead us to. This is in $159,755 increase to the commissions, to the preliminary budget as submitted by me. And then it also includes the outcome on the expense side, the recommendations of the, as we anticipate it, as brought forward by our Transportation Director, Director Knopki. So Ms. Danielson, as I understand it, these dollars would come from one-time dollars within the excess sitting within the street and traffic dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct. The 150,000 would come from excess reserves in the street fund.
What is the excess reserve in the street fund?
At the preliminary budget as presented, the excess reserves are $504,715.
So the last time we talked about that number, because I had referenced that number and then the manager indicated it was closer to like 225 or 250,000. So I'm just curious if that number was correct or incorrect or where that, that lower number came from.
If I may. Commissioner Halliday and Mayor and Commissioners, the original preliminary budget that was presented had quite a bit more debt service that was presented to take. And then after our review of the fiscal '21 capital expenditures and the fiscal '22 capital expenditures, I sat down with Director Knopki and we reconfigured the capital expenditures to remain in fiscal '21 so that the debt, the, the amount, the sizable amount of the debt service in fiscal '22 was dropped.
I appreciate that. I remember we moved a ton of the excess reserve into just capital outlay for this year and got rid of the debt servicing. But I was asking about that reserve number because when I brought up, when, the, the night that I suggested we table the street maintenance fund, maintenance fund rate increase was because of this concern that looking at the sidewalks, slip and falls, the safe routes to schools, any other projects, we were quickly approaching that $500,000 number. And I think we were told the capacity was only 225. And so I just want to make sure we're talking about 504 tonight and not 225.
So in, in Fund 201, as it's presented now, at the end of fiscal '21, we're projecting that excess reserves are 2.38 million. With the proposed capital outlays that are presented now without this particular 150,000 increase, the excess reserves are 504,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any final comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question for Director Danielson.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Assuming when we go to set rates, this would not have impact on that.
This particular amendment would not have an impact on rates.
Thank you.
Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment received either online or in the chambers.
Final comments from the Commission? Madam Manager, any last words?
So ominous, the last words. No, Mayor, I, I do not, I know that the, and I appreciate the Commission as we're trying to understand all of the numbers that are associated and appreciate your patience as we're trying to understand some of the policies that just didn't exist with regard to reserves and setting them. So thank you for, I just want to say thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
You have the floor, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next one is within streets again. This is going to be a little bit different than the one I had sent based on some of the feedback that I had gotten from staff. And so I will move to fund the Safe Routes to Schools Master Plan for $100,000 from Fund 201.
It's been moved. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there was a second.
Yeah, that's why.
So that means the most.
So I will move on to my next one, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so this is slip, trip and fall hazards. So I will move to fund the Slip, Trip and Fall Hazards Program for $100,000 from Fund 201.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission?
Yeah, a question, Mr. Mayor, either for Mr. Knopki or the manager or Ms. Danielson, whoever's the, the best to answer it. So the, the proposal, as I understand it, from Commissioner Dean is as proposed by Director Knopki. Can you clarify whether this is $100,000 that goes out to do slips, trips and falls on the city's dime, making the streets safe for everyone to walk around? Or is it slips, trips and falls, but we're billing it back to the homeowner at the end?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. As I understand it, this is on the expense of the city. It is not billed back to the household.
Okay. So I mean, with that understanding that we are not putting this on tax bills, that we're not assessing this to people, I'd support this one. You know, I've gotten a lot of complaints from, from folks around town who are very supportive of sidewalks, but because of our current system of targeting people for their fixes only based on citizen complaints, what ends up happening is someone will come to me and say, look at my corner property. I've got five little trip hazards and now I have to replace the entire thing. But the neighbor down the block didn't get a complaint and they've got two-foot gouges in their sidewalks and they're not doing anything. So if we're going to gratuitously go around and fix these things, I think it would be imperative on us to not be charging these charges back onto homeowners. So if that's, that's crystal clear in the direction and that's Commissioner Dean's understanding, I'll be supportive of this. But I just want to make sure that we, we're making it very, very clear. And I'll say it again, this is $100,000. It's going out the door and it's not getting billed back to any individual homeowner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, sorry, I'm.
Go ahead.
Slow, slow there. Just a question maybe for Director Knopki, because I, I'm trying to remember the presentation that we got recently. Was it, was the proposed amount $100,000?
I don't see the director on. Is the director on, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, he's approaching the podium.
Oh. You have the floor, Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that was proposed 100,000 just for the simple fact that this year implementing a new program, trying to get some contract money out would probably be very difficult. So to get a lot done this, the summer and fall, that's why we have proactively purchased a sidewalk grinder to try to get some of these things knocked out, excuse me, knocked out this year and then do small, you know, one or two panels replacements. And then reevaluate the program moving into fiscal year '23 to see what the actual needs are of the community and then bringing back that recommendation to the Commission for further review.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Any final comments from the Commission? Madam Manager?
I have no further comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment either online or in the chambers.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Please continue, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this next amendment is going to be to start a placeholder reserve for long-term improvements to the rink at Memorial Park. I know that this has been a conversation amongst lots in the ice sports community for a little while. And I think after this last year, when we saw fluctuating temperatures all over the place that led to the deterioration of the ice and not being usable, is really what has prompted me to bring this forward. So this proposal would put $50,000 aside. The quotes that I have researched and seen are about $300,000 to lay a, a surface and then purchase a rink chiller. The great thing about putting a surface down is that it would allow for the rink to actually be used year-round for summer sports. That could include rollerblading, street hockey, basketball, roller derby, the rest. And, and then also allow for the rink to, to remain in good shape when, when we do. the rink to, to remain in good shape when, when we do have ice down in the winter. As many of you know, we have a very large ice sports community in Helena, not just for kids, but for adults. And if we understand one thing coming out of COVID, it's that really having a place to build community and then have physical activity is, is not just important for your physical health, but also your mental health as well. And this would, would get that, get that going and getting it into place. There are a lot of communities around the Northwest who have done the same thing because of similar issues. I anticipate that our, due to climate change, our, our weather is going to continue to be fluctuating consistently. And so this would give an opportunity to at least have a surface that is reliable throughout the winter months and then usable in the summer months. Just some of the examples, they, they did this in Kalispell and also in Salmon, Idaho. It's also a great opportunity for, as we mentioned before, a public and private partnership. And I think something that'd be really healthy for our community and just expand the accessibility of, of a city facility that right now can only be used during winter months and not necessarily even consistently. So with that, I would move to put a $500,000 from the 440 into a placeholder reserve for the development of an ice and roller rink surface and chiller.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor does not appear to be a second, so the motion is dead.
So I move on, Mr. Mayor. This is my last one.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I would move to provide $1,000 from the general fund for a city sponsorship of Big Sky Pride.
I will, Mayor, I will second this. I do have a couple of questions for, for City Manager, but happy to second it.
And Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, well, one, I think that like how we sponsor other events in town, whether it's the Sun Run or Something Under the Stars, Big Sky Pride obviously provides a huge event every year for the community. And this should help in future years as we find some solutions in terms of, as we've seen, we've, we've dealt with over the last couple of months, this open container issue. I, I think it's, it's good not just for that, but it's, I think it's important for us to be supporting an event that really provides something not just for Helena, but for the whole state in terms of supporting our LGBTQ community and, and really building community within Helena.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no online public comment. I have no one in chambers wishing to make public comment on this item.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, may I ask just a, a quick question to the City Manager on this?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you were gonna have her, have her speak on, on it, but I, I guess just maybe one specific question. Has Big Sky Pride sought out the city's sponsorship in either this year or in the past?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. No, they have not.
Thank you. Any final comments from the commission?
Yeah, and maybe just a question, just so that I'm clear, because I think the, the response we got at our last meeting was that you know, in future years, if the city were to, if this were to be a city-sponsored event, that would provide the necessary permit to to, to do open container. And I just, I, I was a little confused by that response. And so maybe if you could provide some clarification.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner O'Loughlin. There was discussion, I think the, the distinction was that this is a city-run event. With any city-run event, we would have our insurance coverage. So we would be a co, we would be a partner. That's the insurance conversation, as I recall from last time. Distinction being this being much like the City of Service grant program, but had been mixed in with sponsored events. We're now separating out those City of Service events or service grants and then the actual city-sponsored events. So it looks like this motion is different. It doesn't create the partnership where the insurance becomes the city's coverage, but instead is an offer at least $1,000 towards the, the event itself and sponsorship. And perhaps they could use it for insurance too.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Continue, please, Commissioner.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Any other commissioners with amendments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Halliday.
Sure. So I'll try to go down my list. Thankfully, some have been taken care of already. But I can add a few more if you need.
No, we don't.
The first would be, I would move to increase the street maintenance budget that'd be Fund 201 by $1.3 million in debt in order to fund the Knight Street sidewalk program. And if I get a second, I'll comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'll, I'll second that.
So just to comment on that, this has been lingering for, you know, I was gonna say two years, but it's actually two decades or maybe three now. This, this project is somewhere between 80 and 100% scoped. We've had public meetings of outreach from transportation systems. We've had public meetings here in these chambers. It has been discussed. It has been talked over. It's been subject to planning by kids who are now working for this city because it's been so long since this thing has been planned. It was seen as a safe route cutting from Park Avenue over to C R, C R Anderson. This, this is the opportunity to get this funded. The estimate is that it will take approximately $50,000 in new debt from the street maintenance fund. And it's a good project. It's been a long-term recommendation of M-TAC and it's time for this commission to vote on it one way or the other.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to ask Ms. Danielson to talk about and speak to the, the impact the $1.3 million loan would have on the fees and what it would look like if in fact we need to increase fees in order to accommodate that debt. Thank you. Ms. Danielson is at the mic.
You have the floor, Director Danielson. Mayor Commissioners, I can probably stand. So Director Knopki asked me a while back to do a bit of an analysis on rates to raise funds. And based on our current database of those that we assess rates to, if we were to want to increase revenue by $1.3 million, that's about a 20% increase in assessment rates. I believe I did a quick calculation on the debt service and I believe that would, with this amendment, and it would result in about $100,000 payment for, for debt service to the streets fund. So either way, the assessments would have to increase, one, to either cover the outlay of the $1.3 million by 20% to raise the assessments, or would have to raise the assessments by approximately 3% just to cover the, the future debt service of, of this capital outlay.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question for either the manager or Director Danielson. Thank you. We've had some discussion about sort of an analysis of fees and rates and rate settings. And can you, can you describe where we're at in that process and where we're headed?
Before you, I'll just jump in really quick.
Commissioner Logan wanted to point out during the June 7th conversation
with the commission, we had said we would come back to talk to you all about the streets assessment and the street assessment overall. After this budget item as well, we can do, we can hold off if you wanted to in order to have a more in-depth conversation about the street assessment. Overall, though, we do and will be doing an analysis of all of our assessments. It's one of the reasons why we're not increasing or proposing to increase within the preliminary budget, all of the assessments or even a portion of them. We wanted to spend some time and analyze them. But the street assessment, as I understand it, is, is intended to come forward to all of you for further discussion.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want to make sure I understand on the, the, we're, we're adopting the final rates tonight, is that right? For everything other than street maintenance? Is that what's proposed on our public hearings?
That, that is correct. The streets of maintenance assessment was tabled.
And so irrespective of what we do with the methodology for fees, right, do nothing over the next year. Everyone is paying the same rates they paid last year is what we're saying going forward for fiscal 22, right?
We would still have to propose that as a resolution of intention and the commission would have to adopt that in order to do the assessments, the actual assessments.
So that the ROI's that we adopted last meeting or the meeting before and the ones that are on this agenda are not setting the, the rates that will go on tax bills for the coming year?
No, yeah, yes, they are. Thank you. Yes, they are. It's just that we tabled streets assessments. So we're going to have to come back with that.
Yeah, I'm not talking about streets, sorry. When I heard something the manager said about the preliminary budget, those rates aren't touchable again, right, for the remainder of FY '22 by law?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that.
Mayor, if I?
If I may. Please go ahead.
Commissioner Halliday, I think that's maybe restate your question for me.
Yeah. So we have a, we have a law that says we have to adopt rates by, for these type of rates by August 15, I think, of any given calendar year. Normally, we've always done them sometime in July and we adopt them on the 11th hour, right in the middle of August, once we've seen how the budget shakes out. But my understanding from how we've always been told, whether it was by Mr. McGee or Mr. Jorgensen or yourself or the prior city managers is, once we hit these rates tonight, we have set them for the tax bills for fiscal 22. And if we let them slip by August 15, they are for sure set for fiscal 22.
Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, that's correct. Again, I suppose under the bylaws, a motion could be reconsidered. But I think given the timeframe, that's generally correct, is that tonight, items that are agenda for rate and assessment setting, which do not include street maintenance, tonight is the final decision on those rates.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to be clear that we're, we're keeping them at zero increase this year. It's not, we're not reducing rates to zero. We're just keeping at an zero.
That is correct.
For all of fiscal 22.
That is correct.
Okay. Sorry to get a soft tangent there. Just random statement. Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission?
Mayor, I have.
Do you have your hand raised, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Director Danielson. Just in your experience with kind of the level of, level of debt. I mean, I, I'd gotten the impression that in, in some circumstances, our debt levels are fairly low. Can you give me a sense of where we sit with debt and the street maintenance fund? It looks like, you know, we have debt service of around 300,000. Like, are, can you just give us a sense of sort of our debt load today? And if we were to move forward with, with this using debt, you know, where, where does that kind of general, generally place us?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. Yes, the city has been fairly conservative with debt service. This is a, in particular, is a special revenue fund, streets. And so as a special revenue fund, it intended to support itself. So even though the city as a whole, excuse me, has been, has been very conservative, especially with general obligation debt, the, the special assessment debt would be required to raise funds in order to make the debt service payment. Currently, the reserves on that, this particular fund are being drawn down. So I believe that in order to take out debt service, the commission and/or the, the city would have to approve rate increases to support that.
Thank you. And Mayor, just a follow-up question. So when you say that we're drawing it down, you're talking about that 500,000 reserve level. So we, we've got, we've, we've had some amendments that start to draw it down. It's not fully drawn down, although I, I acknowledge it's a, it's a reserve. So okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes. And if I may, Commissioner O'Loughlin, with that reserve drawdown, obviously, Commissioner or, our Director of Transportation Services, Director Knopki, will be, you know, working with him on a long-term streets, capital improvement program. And in that capital improvement program, we'll identify funding sources for that as well. Whether it be debt service, grants, other types of funding that could potentially pay for that. But part of the capital improvement program is, is to identify potential funding for that too. The general fund could also support that if, if the commission desired, but it's a big, it's ideal that a special revenue fund support its own expenditures.
Thank you. And I would imagine we probably have a similar circumstance with the potential of ARPA funds as well, although I know that there's some on some lack of clarity and that, you know, I know that a big focus is water, wastewater, though there are some, some additional resources that might be available as well.
Based on, thank you, Commissioner. Based on my review so far of ARPA funding, it does not address street maintenance. However, the, the, the portion of the fund or the, the funding, the ARPA funding that is, is geared toward revenue losses, those particular revenue losses have a formula for calculating that's been mandated by the U.S. Treasury on how to calculate those revenue losses. That money, that revenue loss money can then just be used at the city's discretion.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful.
So Ms. Danielson, sorry. I know you really want to sit down. I apologize. So I'm looking at the street maintenance fund for this year as, as proposed now with, with the proposed capital drawdown. And, you know, I'm seeing that we've got long-term debt increasing by 1.6 million proposed as a revenue source, right? So if we just strike that out, right, we're down to about oh, six, $6,900,000 in overall revenue to the street maintenance fund. You know, again, forgive me that I can't do the math on the fly. I'm looking at our capital outlay down below, which has been increased to 4.893 and a half million. So I'm gonna just draw a line through both of those for ease and so that those kind of apples to apples zero out. And I understand you could tell me a million ways why I'm being a simpleton. But I'm gonna call that about $5 million there. And if I subtract that five right from our expenditure, we'd go down to about $5,611. from our expenditure, we'd go down to about $5,611,000 in our total expenditure. And I've also taken away the long-term debt up above. And that would put us at, you know, something like a 1.4. Again, I know I'm making this math on the fly, so I apologize. But that'd give us something like a $1.4 million cushion of revenues over expenditures if we were not throwing any money out the door on capital expenses nor taking on debt. And that would appear to be the year-over-year apples-to-apples of this fund of revenues over expenditures. So that would mean every year, then, this fund is producing a surplus. I'll even wind it down, and we'll just say it's producing a surplus of $1 million per year. And Knight Street that I'm proposing, which the original number we got was $50,000, but now we say is up to 100, is $100,000, which is less than either my 1.4 million number or the $1 million that I'm using conservatively. And my take would be, then, if I look at this $5 million capital outlay, that if we had chosen to debt service all of that, assuming the number of $1.3 million to $100,000 in debt, we're looking at something in the range that of $500,000 in new debt servicing. I'm just, I'm doing ratios here. So it just seems to me that despite the $100,000 increase, this Knight Street piece, just based on the numbers we're looking at today, the fund itself doesn't seem to need a rate increase. It appears to have capacity to service it so long as we don't overextend it on either additional purchases or additional debt servicing increases. I know that was a mouthful.
Do you think you would know, with all of the adjustments today, that answer? Just because it seems like there's been some, too many adjustments to be able to answer that. So the other question is, just to get to the policy point that you might be asking, is this debt, in order for the fund to take on any debt, which is what I think I heard, in order for it to take on any debt, it has to result in an increase in the assessment? Is that?
No, that's what we're, that's what I'm asking, Ms. Danielson, because we've got a $1.4 million surplus in the fund, and I'm asking for $100,000 new obligation. And my math says that that leaves us in the black by 1.3 million on a recurring basis.
Commissioner Halliday, I'm going to have to look at an analysis on that and get back to you. And if I may, Commissioner Halliday, there is nothing that prevents the city to bring forth a budget amendment, once that analysis is done, to fund a Knight Street project. Just because we're adopting the preliminary budget tonight doesn't necessarily mean that you can't bring forth an amendment with our final budget to present debt service and/or not debt service, and whether or not the fund can support the Knight Street project. We can certainly bring that forth at the next adoption of the final budget with that analysis intact.
Okay, but we could also do it tonight, right?
That is, that is up to the Commission, yes.
Fair enough.
The other, the other thing, perhaps, Commissioner Halliday, I mean, we can do it today, and then we can also make a budget amendment later to take it out, right? If we ultimately determine when we get to the rates, right, we are not setting street maintenance rate today, right? So I would imagine there needs to be further analysis by the staff once we, once we complete this budget, right? That's always been the way that we've done it, and then we deal with rates after. If at that point, it makes sense to adjust the budget, we could certainly do it at that time, too, to pull it back out.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner, Commissioner Danielson. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So did I understand you correctly that your rough estimate of a rate increase could be in the neighborhood of 20%? Did I hear that correctly?
Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Logan. No, if we were to just flat want to outlay the capital with no debt service, for $1.3 million, $1.4 million, we would have to raise rates by 20% in order to pay for it outright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is a proposal of long-term debt that the city has estimated as between $50,000 and $100,000, which we have capacity for.
Thank you. Any public comments? And Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online, and no one appears to be here in the chambers for public comment.
Any final comments from the Commission? And a manager?
I have no further comments, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Please continue, Commissioner. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Commissioner, would you just hold on? At this time, I will take a 15-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, I just, clarification. I think you said 15, correct?
One, five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. This meeting is called to order. Commissioner Halliday, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so I've been instructed by Ms. Danielson that when I say increase street maintenance by, I should say, increase the appropriation to street maintenance. So we apparently have to take that motion again.
Please go ahead.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to increase the appropriation to this street maintenance fund in the amount of $1.3 million in debt to build out, to complete the Knight Street sidewalks project.
Second.
How do we do that time? Sweet.
It's been moved and seconded, ending discussion from the commission. No discussion. Madam Manager, any?
No, thank you.
Okay, any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no online public comment, and I have no one here in the chambers to make public comment on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please go ahead.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Lockman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Please continue, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Next one on my list here, and again, I'll just comment if it gets seconded, but I would move to reduce the general fund expenditures by $60,000 for the waste reduction study, or the solid waste reduction study, and increase the expenditures from, increase the appropriation to and expenditures from the residential solid waste fund by $60,000 to reflect the solid waste reduction study.
Second.
And so, Mr. Mayor, this, I just see this as a tweak. This, this is a study that's born out of interest in, by residential solid waste. I'd even entertain a friendly motion if someone could identify how much of it goes to commercial, but I put it all into residential solid waste. It does nothing to change the nature of the study itself. It simply moves the money from the general fund to residential solid waste, which appears to have about a $384,000 excess reserve at this time. So this one-time expenditure won't have any impact there, and it just serves to reduce overall general fund budget expenditures.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
For the city manager. So, on page, it's 344 of the agenda packet and 338 of the budget in solid waste residential. I see that it has listed FY22 solid waste master plan 45,000. Is this different?
Yes, Commissioner Dean, this master plan is related to not only within Public Works, the transfer station, but the long-term view of not only capital improvements, but also volume load and what would be, you know, build-out potential for, for waste in a master plan, different than waste consumption reduction plan where it looks at not only trash bin and recycling, but also consumption reduction methods outside of that. So, the 60,000 and the reason for the, the recommendation that had come from the general fund was more in line with the idea that it's not just around trash, that it is in addition to other conservation efforts that could be implemented citywide.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to help, and, and obviously, the not just within Public Works solid waste.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Yes, I, I do believe the intention was to be broader than just waste and recycling, and instead, that addition, in addition, that, that larger, larger idea of reduction as a premise.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no online public comment, and I have no one in the chambers here to make public comment on this item.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, just comment, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, this at its heart is a diversion study, right? Right now, we have a debate with a couple of local composting businesses who are being told that they are within residential solid waste. All this is doing is housekeeping to get some money out of the general fund, or expenditure out of the general fund, and moving it to a fund that has capacity, and frankly, is the one that this is targeting at its, at its heart. And so, there's, the, the, our staff originally wanted us to bundle this into the master plan, and it was essentially pulled out to be its own thing. And so, originally, if this had been acquiesced to, it'd be sitting in our master plan right now. This is a dollar saver to the general fund. Nothing else. It doesn't change the scope of the plan.
Thank you, Commissioner. No further comments?
Just another quick question.
Please go ahead.
I guess, I wonder, City Manager, if, can you talk about the impact of moving this? And, I, I mean, I would think that probably changes who's involved in getting this, this project going, but can you talk about maybe some of those impacts?
Sure. Sure. So, I spent a lot of time working and listening and chatting with the staff and, and with Conservation Board, with the idea that this isn't just about trash. And I get that there's, you know, the outcome is potentially less trash in the landfill, but the idea is beyond just trash and reducing what you put at your curb. And I think that's, consumption has a broader, and, and so, I, I was absolutely willing to put it in, I know that, into the general fund. That's the intent in supporting the CCB's request, and then also to understand that, that, that is their expectation. They'll be working with the, the Public Works team. It is not intended to be a duplication of efforts. If it was, it would be a waste of, of dollars, and I don't want to do that. I do want to be thoughtful around what the ideas they, as the board had brought forward in their idea of a strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
I got to tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm totally befuddled by this conversation. Like, literally, it's going to be the same plan, whether it's paid out of solid waste or general fund. And so, like, why, we're usually, we're going to pay a consultant to do it. We're either going to pay the consultant out of solid waste, we're going to pay the consultant out of general fund. Well, why would anyone on this commission want to pay it out of general fund if they've got an enterprise fund that should be funding it? That, that's just a dollars and cents saver. That's all this is.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, online, I do have one hand raised, which would like to entertain public comment, one last. Then I have Denise Barber.
Go ahead, Ms. Barber. Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Halliday, I understand the logic, but I disagree with it, that it doesn't matter really where it comes from. The consultant is going to do the plan regardless of who he or she gets paid for or by. And I disagree with that fundamentally. When you move this, the budgeting of this study over to solid waste, and then you have the sustainability coordinator over in public waste, you're going, or, I'm sorry, Public Works, you're going to have a Public Works plan, and we want it very purposefully to be much bigger than coming from the Public Works. And I just, I don't have enough faith that we will have the kind of direction that we're wanting, which is significant pre-consumer waste reduction, which will result, if we're successful, in a significantly less waste going to the landfill, which there are some concerns about that because of the income and how things are currently budgeted, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, when we thought of this originally, we were very, we being the Conservation Board, we very much wanted the, the sustainability coordinator to oversee the work and have that person be independent of the public work. So, I object to moving it out of the general fund and funding it with Public Works funding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment, either online or in the chambers.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Lockman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
You have the floor, Commissioner.
Mayor, so the next one, this, this one's a little tricky in terms of, I'm not sure the, the mechanics, so I'm going to look to Ms. Danielson when she shakes her head at me to tell me what to do here. Previously, I want to say like a week ago, based on the budget balance tool thing that we used, we increased general fund expenditures with that $1.4 million that was out there to pay about $90,000 bucks to make short-term street maintenance improvements to the five-point intersection downtown, commonly known as mini malfunction junction. The motion here's goal is to remove that $90,000 from the general fund, again, a misplaced money from the general fund, and move it into the street maintenance fund, which is where these type of programs should be funded from, unless you just want to keep spending general fund dollars on things they shouldn't be spent on. So, I'm going to move to reduce expenditures from the general fund by $90,000 for five-point temporary improvements, and increase appropriations to the street maintenance fund by $90,000 for five-point temporary improvements.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll just explain, again, just doing my very, very rough math, we were at 504 minus 150, take, should take us down to 354, 354 takes us, minus 100, takes us down to 254. So that should leave us with 254 minus 90, which would be 164,000 left in capacity in the street maintenance fund for the excess reserve this year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Apologize. I just apologize. It's just housecleaning to me, Mr. Mayor. This, these funds should come out of street maintenance, not general fund. We have better uses of general fund money.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you might have been getting to this, but I'm just wondering if the mayor, excuse me, the city manager, can talk about why you believe that it's best to keep it in, in the general fund.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. At the time, I don't think we had been shuffling the deck as much as happening here tonight. And usually, when we do these kinds of shuffles, we have, you know, the big, bigger policy direction, and then we come back with a proposal. So, the, the intention for the general fund cares conversation that took place, the general fund savings from cares, reimbursements, the intention was to spend down those dollars on the things, on items that had been underfunded, or were not funded. We would ultimately just result in, what we, what we would do is result in current year savings that could be moved forward or reallocated within, I haven't, those general fund allocated dollars within the FY21 budget are already appropriated, so I would discretion of making the decision as to what happens with those dollars, if you could, just based on timing.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no online public comment and no one in chambers making public comment on this item.
Madam Clerk, please publish.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Lockman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion, I'm sorry, the motion fails two to three.
Please continue, Commissioner.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, I would, bear with me one moment here, move to increase the street maintenance appropriations from the street maintenance budget by 75,000 for a safe highway crossing at Ewing and Lyndale, as provided by the traffic study item LYN-1.
Second.
And I'll just explain, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, this was one of the recommendations of the traffic study that we just had, right? We just did the five-point piece. This one, we're putting, just for the engineering portion of it, right? That's approximately what Mr. Knopki told us it would cost. That, that was a crossing highlighted by our consultants as a relatively dangerous one, but also one that needs, that, that would be a good place for improvements. It connects right over to Kendrick Legion Field, a source of someplace we're hoping people are going to walk to on a warm summer night to watch either Legion baseball, or maybe Expedition baseball in the future. These are long-term projects. It's an MDT route, so it's going to take starting today if we think we're, we're going to see something safe to cross even in the next four years. So, this is the seed money to get it started out of street maintenance. And it connects the Centennial Trail out of South Central, which is a sorely missing connector.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comments from the commission?
Well, Mayor, I will just echo, I appreciate this motion, and I think we, we do these studies and assessments and needs assessments, and I think this is an opportunity to actually move forward with the recommendations of, of one of the, you know, many studies that, that we've expended funds on. So, I appreciate the motion and, and think this is a, a great way to start implementing that robust study that we, that we got done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment, either online or in the chambers on this item.
Madam Manager, any input?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lockman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
I assume you're done, Commissioner Halliday?
Totally, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple more. The, I would move to increase the appropriations to and expenditures from the street maintenance budget by 75,000 for a safe crossing of Centennial Trail that Montana and Bozeman has provided for in our recent traffic study. I believe that's MT-3.
Second.
Do you want to talk about it, Commissioner?
I can always yak on if you're asking me to, Mr. Mayor. The, we, you know, we commissioned this study, ooh, going on four years ago now, in stalled-out Centennial Trail in large part, moving over into the Sixth Ward and the future development of Centennial Trail, specifically waiting for this study to be done, to tell us what's the best way that these guys see to move people across Montana Avenue. Originally, Centennial Trail had looked to duck down and cross the five-point intersection, which was just a dealender. That ended your traversing of the trail. So, this, this proposes to use the far more logical route going by So this, this proposes to use the far more logical route, going by Lewis and Clark Brewery, ducks down on, what's that, Argyle, then goes across on Bozeman with a different ideas of a safe harbor island in the middle or other concepts. The really nice thing here, when we commissioned this study, is that we hired Robert Petcha and Associates to help us out. The reason we picked RPA is because they're basically MDT's golden children when it comes to doing these open studies. And so it was like, hey, give us something that, you know, they're going to approve in four years instead of seven. This is a really important, critical piece of Centennial Trail. If we think that we're really going to complete it and go all the way out, where it should finally link up into that trail, go into East Helena, and really complete that amazing sort of intercity and intra-city route, this, this may be the hardest part of this trail alone, crossing that four lanes of incredibly dangerous traffic. I did it with two kids the other day on a roundabout run, and it is not fun, it is scary, and you are going to always have a problem with this trail. So this, this is a great opportunity to bite off that piece that has been lingering for years. It's a great way to show our support for Centennial Trail, and it should take us down to $14,000 left in the excess reserves of the street maintenance fund, if my math is correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, well, one, I appreciate you bringing this, Commissioner Halliday, this was one of them that I had added to the cares, general fund savings, and really important connecting piece. I am wondering, just based on all the amendments that we've adopted tonight, if the city manager or potentially Director Danielson could give us an update as to where we are in terms of street maintenance and other impacts that we need to consider. Not that I don't trust your math.
Oh, I feel like I'm running into my own math issues and looking over on the housing trust that we went through earlier. So I, from what I'm gathering, the $1.3 million debt wasn't fully burdened, so now he's spending down the debt, does that make sense to you?
Commissioner Halliday's proposal is spending down the excess reserves.
So do you believe we're at the same spot, which is around the 100,000?
With this, he would, he would drive down 14, 15,000.
I remember that, sorry, we're back and forth-ing, Commissioner Dean had suggested, and just before Commissioner Halliday had made his amendments, her amendment, which was 159,000, so I just, I'll, I'll go back through and triple-check it now. I do have Excel open, so I'll just have a look.
Yeah, I may have had the math wrong. If I said 159, I had 150, so we'd be at five.
Are you done, Commissioner?
No, I think, I think we're, we've got the slide rules out and we're doing some calculations.
And I apologize, my, my internet is messing up.
I don't have my desk.
Halliday, as well as your $75,000, brings you to 434,755, ultimately against 504,714, leaving around 70,000.
Just to follow up, 70,000, if we were to adopt this amendment, or before this amendment?
If you were to adopt this amendment.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment, either online or in the chambers, on this item.
Final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, Commissioner, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully down to the last couple here. So I would move-
Commissioner, you told me the last one, it was the last couple, nice, last couple.
Couples, couples are shifting numbers, like I'll do it tomorrow.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would move to increase the expenditures from gas tax fund 240 by 200,000 for the constructions of sidewalks in a safe routes to schools project, to be determined by the commission.
Second.
So I'll, I'll just explain, Mr. Mayor, since even though we've got sufficient capacity in street maintenance, especially if we're going to take on debt service, I know the first objection this evening to any safe routes to schools construction project is going to be a procedural one, so that we don't have to say we don't want to do them, that we wouldn't have enough money in the fund. So we've got 451,475 appropriated currently in gas tax for, quote, "commission-approved" priorities, 596,890 in operating revenue in that fund. So this is a proposed expenditure out of that fund to ensure safe routes to schools project that actually gets built. We've talked about things like starting, starting sidewalks around Broadwater School, we've talked about other ideas like that. And so that's what this is. This is a safe routes to schools construction project. We can all have a nice Wednesday meeting sometime and talk about what, what the project actually entails. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am wondering if maybe Commissioner Halliday could provide some clarification, and if he'd be willing to include within this, some of, well, the recommendations from the National Safe Routes to Schools program, the earlier amendment to fund the plan failed. And prior to bringing that amendment, I did do a bunch of research on, you know, how, how to best implement safe routes to schools programs. The, the national program specifically recommends that you develop a community plan and a priority list that involves stakeholders and builds coalitions, so that you are getting, really having the most strategic impact for the community. And so within this, you know, is there a commitment to ensuring that we are doing this in a manner that, that facilitates a priority list, to make sure that we are actually, you know, spending $200,000 in the place where it will have the most impact?
So, Commissioner, this is limited to a construction project, right? The idea of what we did at Highland, what we do, we're doing at Lawrence and Warren, whether we start building sidewalks around Broadwater School, which leads them to the tune of, I think, 640, 610,000, looking to Mr. Knopki. That, that's what these goals are, is to bite off these, right? We have an elephant when it comes to sidewalk deficiencies, and especially around schools, and that's what this is looking towards. I have no problem if a future commission wants to dedicate funds to study it. I've made it pretty clear during this process that I'm, I'm not interested in using these funds at this time to do another study when we've got so many lingering, clear projects that we know of. I think it would be great if we used internal staff capacity, since we've got a traffic engineer and we've got folks within our departments who can facilitate these types of projects. We have relationships with the school district. We can do so much of that heavy lift on our own, if that's what we choose to do. I know staff has indicated capacity issues. If this commission said it is our goal, right, to facilitate that project over the next 12 months, then when they're freed up to start doing that, start doing that, those internal jobs, form a, form a mayor's commission on safe routes to schools, and involve the community, get it done. But, but I've been in Helena long enough doing this to watch another study that we developed that sits on a shelf, and we know we need these sidewalks and these projects today. So that's, that's what this proposal is. It's a construction project that the five of us will sit down, we can take public comment, we can do work-study sessions, we can call the school district in for a multi, multi-jurisdictional conversation, but, but that's my, that's my intent here, just to be crystal clear.
Mr. Mayor, a question, if that's okay for the city manager, and I don't know if she'd want to defer this to Director Knopki or not, but I'm wondering if someone could comment on, you know, what that process would actually look like. I know what, my greatest concern is that we, we don't have the community, we aren't developing a priority list that really reflects what is most necessary, and instead, you know, more of the, maybe high-profile or, or projects where, you know, it gets a lot of attention, and I just want to make sure that we are doing this in, in the manner that is, you know, most, that is recommended by the national program, but I'm wondering what this might look like.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, excuse me, I have no online public comment, I have no individuals in the chambers here to make public comment.
Thank you. Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, will the city manager get a chance to answer my question?
Oh, the, please, Madam, I'm sorry, my line, I didn't mean, I apologize, I really do. Madam Manager, would you please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. The positions that were funded, that would be funded through the adoption of the resolutions tonight, would be made available. $200,000 can do a lot more than a contractor hired to go out and do some work, so we could possibly do one to two blocks based on that dollar amount. So just depends on, yes, there is no prioritization. I've heard, lots of ideas around how to do that. Of course, I would love to hear from my experts in the team to tell me which would be the best. I know they came up with ideas during the presentation to you all on what a prioritization list would look like, but that's kind of where we're starting from.
Are you okay with that? Madam, Commissioner Dean?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not actually sure who this question, trying to remember who, I believe a commissioner sits on the non-motorized advisory council, is that you, Commissioner Halliday?
That's me.
Okay. So I don't know if Commissioner Halliday or if Director Knopki wants to weigh in on this, but I am just curious, I mean, we do have an advisory body that I think has been lifting up many of these projects over the years. Do you, do you have a sense, I mean, how, you know, how that body could potentially help the, the city think about these types of projects?
So MTAC has been looking at school-related projects for the entire time that I've been on it, right? They were instrumental in pushing for the Broadwater Avenue piece that we still won't move forward on. We involved the school district in that discussion, we involved Lewis and Clark County Public Health in that discussion, we've done walk audits with them, they would, they would be thrilled if we said to them, we just, we just put aside $200,000 to actually build so that kids can get to school safely in neighborhoods that have sidewalk deficits. They have ideas throughout the city, and so they'd be, they'd be a great sounding board to use, sort of like when they, when they were a focal point for the development of Centennial Trail and other large-scale projects that the commission wanted to use its, its citizen volunteers and citizens experts for. And I will say, they were, they were more adamant than me against the expenditure of the dollars for a study.
Any other final comments from the commission? Madam, did we entertain, let me go again, public comments?
Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk? Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioners, I have no online public comment, and I have no one in chambers wishing to make public comment.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I am going to move to increase the general fund expenditure by $150,000 for paving Centennial Trail on the railroad right-of-way between Benton Avenue and Henderson, and between Henderson and Jocelyn.
Second.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll explain this one, and I, I'll call it a kitsotic effort. You know, we, we have a hope of getting that railroad right-of-way to actually be a dedicated easement for the city. This has been an ongoing project for years, and for anyone who uses Centennial Trail and is frustrated as they travel along it, that suddenly they're on dirt or rivets or puddles, it is because the railroad won't currently allow us to, to fix that trail up. But when we get that railroad right-of-way, we will have the ability to put asphalt on it, just like we recently agreed to do the asphalt around the back of the transfer station. This, this would allow us to extend it all the way out, and you'd have a fully paved Centennial Trail running from Centennial Park all the way out to Montana Wild. I don't know that we need $150,000. I'm actually optimistic that the 150 that we already put in for the transfer station might, might get us a little, little bit of the way into these other projects, but this, this is essentially a placeholder. I wish the number was lower. I thought we would, we would all just agree to swap that $90,000 on the, the five-point intersection, so that the general fund would have had a reduction in $90,000, and it would have been an easy backfill on this one, but that's what this is. This is a Centennial Trail build-out fix.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just hoping to get some input from the city manager on the impact to the general fund for this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just, one of the misses of this budget request-
Madam Manager?
Oh, yes? Mayor? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The positions were around $150,000 that I had said, oh, those were, that were adopted as part of the new position, though those are actually not a part of the request as the preliminary budget, because it was a part of the larger sidewalks conversation. So my apologies if that had influence on the $200,000 that you just voted and approved to, but just received confirmation that the preliminary budget does not include the staff that would cover the implementation of a program where they would be, and the city would be filling out those sidewalks. So the impact of the general fund is that there's no one to do the work, and we would be putting these out to bid, and $200,000 and even 150,000. We would be putting these out to bid and $200,000 and even 150,000. Joined together, might be doing something more, but whenever you do contract outwork, it's more expensive.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no online public comment. I have no one in the chambers wishing to make public comment on this item.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to increase the general fund expenditure by $200,000 for preliminary engineering and any carryover savings for the Henderson Street Bridge for Centennial Trail.
Second.
And I'll just explain, Mr. Mayor, my, my typo in there had said, "street maintenance." I wish it could be in "street maintenance." It can't be, at least as we've been told by Works Transportation Systems, the lawyers and the manager. And so I'm assuming in this case, they, they've all got it right and I'm wrong. So we have to do these expenditures out of the general fund. One of the tragedies when we got the original CTAP money for, for Centennial Trail was where there just wasn't room, there wasn't time, and there was no easement to put this bridge down across Henderson. It's, it's another critical component piece of Centennial Trail. So it'll, it'll linger forever. This is an opportunity to get it started and start saving for it, to know what your actual cost is going to be in the long run. So just like the crossing at Montana, just like paving, and finally getting this bridge are the key components to really finishing this, getting this western portion of the trail on. So I will leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, because if my last one was kitsotic, this one is off the charts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate this. You know, I, I think this is, this is an important investment for us to make with general fund dollars. I, I think there are things that are included in our budget today, general, significant general fund transfers that are, in my mind, not necessarily reflected as commission priorities. I think this, you know, this has been a long-time project and the number of people, in fact, someone on Sunday talked to me about the Henderson Bridge and just the need to address this pretty significant safety issue. So I, you know, this is, this is, this is a tough one for me, just given where we sit. But I, you know, I had hoped that we could prioritize general fund dollars in a, in a little different way because I, I do think this is a very important project and important for us to take the next step of, of completing this. And, and I think this is, this is the way to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Question for the city manager and potentially Director Knopki. I know when this had come up before recently, there was a discussion of we might, a bridge not actually be feasible and a crossing down those slopes might be more feasible from the engineering perspective. And I'm just wondering if we could get a comment on that. And then also, you know, this, if adopted, what this, this is an impact to the general fund and other priorities.
Thanks, Commissioner Dean. I will turn it over to Director Knopki in a second. The hard part with that tossing dollars at something and hoping that it works is that timing is always an issue. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Director Knopki. You can talk about some of the engineering issues that might come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The, the enhanced crossing that I spoke of was an interim fix for the, what we have now to say the bridge being built. It was, it would be similar to the rectangular rapid flash beacons that we have crossing Benton there at, right before the railroad crossing. It would be an enhanced pedestrian feature that we could enhance safety at that in the interim while we were waiting for the easement to make it through, its way through the BNSF Railroad. And then, and then after we get the easement, getting the engineering done and getting construction done, it was just intended to be an interim condition.
So that's likely, you know, BNSF, their process plus, plus our own process. So we're, we're talking pretty significant, we're locking down dollars for a pretty significant amount of time.
Just a question for Mr. Knopki. So if we did the interim work, right, which would be, I assume significantly less hopefully than $200,000, would we need BNSF's, BNSF's permission?
Mayor and Commissioners, no.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, or Mr. Mayor, I guess a follow-up question and I hope Director Knopki maybe doesn't go too far. Do we know what the cost of that interim solution would be?
David, do you know, excuse me, Director Knopki, do you know what the cost is of the interim solution?
Mayor and Commissioners, the, for a standard, are a rectangular rapid flash beacon at around $15,000 to $20,000. But this one would have to have additional flashers because of the railroad crossing itself. So we'd, similar to at Benton where we have flashers before the tracks and after, would be a similar one. So a rough guess would be probably, you know, around the 30 to 40 range.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, I'm wondering if you'd be interested in amending this motion to instead cover the rapid flashing beacons that will also allow the time to get the rest of this sorted out instead of having this amount locked down without actually, you know, getting the work done because of the easement issue?
So the, the purpose of it is, right, to do the engineering work, right, which is going to cost something. That's what's going to tell us what's feasible, what's allowed, how much we think it's going to cost. The 200,000 was maybe our engineering study. I think Mr. Knopki said it could be 50,000, could be 100,000, right? The remainder would be like, save, right? If the money's not there because someone says to us, "You can never put a bridge here," then that money's gone, right? Like, we're not going to, you don't have to leave it appropriate in the budget. Like, we're the commission. We can just be like, "That money's not there anymore and move on." So I'm, I'm asking for a vote on the support of, right, doing this project, the engineering to start it and to talk about potential saving. I would more than welcome a subsequent motion if you'd like, when, when I'm, when we're done with this one, to do that interim fix. Like, I'm, I'm for it. You've got my second. But I would, I would, this is, this is specifically for the engineering piece on the Henderson Street Bridge. So you, you're free to make like the motion to amend it or something if you want, but I would prefer we have a straight-up-down vote on the, the bridge and the engineering and the construction. And then feel free to make that a follow-up.
I'm sorry, one minute. My, my, my internet is really, really acting up. So I'll turn my, my camera off with the hope that it will improve. So I apologize if you stop seeing my handsome face. But I'm right here with you. So any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, Mayor, just maybe one more comment because now I'm sort of seeing the whole picture here. And I think, I, I think what, what I'm hearing from staff is that we don't quite know, right, what the best engineering design is. And then I don't think we're ever going to know unless we invest the dollars to do this preliminary engineering study. And if this commission says, "We're not interested in fixing Henderson," I, I think that's fine, but this seems like a pretty important first step in order, you know, to continue to move along and sort of save the resources we need in order to, to create a long-term fix for, for this intersection. So, and I also understand the desire of savings. I mean, I think there's another potential way that we could sort of allocate some funds for a preliminary engineering study, knowing that we likely are not going to sort of move forward with the project this year. I, I recognize the desire to have some savings so that we can, over the long term, save the money needed to actually do, do the project. So I, I just, it seems clear to me that we've got to take the first step in order to, to figure out how best to handle this intersection.
And, Mr. Mayor, maybe just a follow-up comment on that. I appreciate the, the Commissioner reminded me that, you know, love it or hate it, when the commission created the quiet zone for the railroad back in, I think the final touches were put on in about 2015 or 2016, that was, that was what, the culmination of something? 2007 or 2009 was the initial study, the initial feasibility piece to do that. Commissions after that saved 100,000 one year, 5,000 another year, right? As, as they tried to claw their way towards a solution that the commissions, and this is a multi-person commission project to do. So someone does have to bite it off at some point. I'm, I'm reminded of, of that as a really good demonstration of a long-term project when, when the commission chooses to go that route.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment either online or in the chambers on this item.
Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails two to three.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This was not an amendment I had previously brought and I apologize for that. This is coming off of the conversation we just had. And I, I do value finding a solution for the Henderson Crossing. It's one I use all the time and I, I know how scary it can be. And I know that there's lots of high school kids that are constantly using it as well. And so as we are working towards a long-term solution, I would like to be supportive of the, the possibility that the staff has brought forward of an interim solution as we work through these other legal issues. And so with that, with that, I would like to move to fund the interim Henderson solution of a rapid flashing beacon as proposed by staff with $40,000 from the general fund.
Second.
And maybe a question for the Commissioner, so.
It's been moved in a second. Is there any comments from the commission?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a question for the Commissioner. So this is our interim solution towards a long-term goal. What's the, what is our, what's our bill towards?
Well, Commissioner, I think just as Director Knopki just indicated, there are still issues pending before they can move forward on other options. And so I think this gives us time to, one, work out the issues with the railroad and to figure out what is a long-term strategy of funding. I think that the city manager and staff have done a really good job within this budget of looking at our strategic outcomes and starting to align our budget to reflect those and also provide some long-term stability. And so with this, it provides an interim solution while also giving staff an opportunity to work through what are the next steps and recommendations of getting it funded over the long term.
And so here's, here's where I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to support this, but I'm going to push back on you because the only way that our staff can, next time I turn and say, "Manager O'Loughlin, how do we get this funded in the long term?" And the manager's going to say, "I'll ask David." And David will say, "Well, we need to do an engineering study." And that's, that's going to tell you how much you need and then that's going to tell you how much you've got to save. And so I'm going to support this because it's, it's frickin' dangerous out there for people to use that thing. And at least we're slapping a bandage on a bad situation. But, you know, think about that in the future because I won't be here next year. There is really no, no push for this thing and we don't have a plan for it. And so the interim is going to become the permanent. That's why I'd like to see us put money in the budget, but just a, just a food for thought for the future on that one.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I, I don't necessarily disagree with you and you've been on this commission a long time. And I know you've talked about, you know, you've been here nearly a decade and lots of things haven't gotten done. And I think that, you know, I would like to be part of, yes, finding solutions, but I also want to make sure that we're, we're doing it in a manner that is sustainable for the city and we are able to do it responsibly. And I guess that's where I'd leave it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no online public comment and no one in chambers wishing to make public comment.
Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Commissioner, you have the floor.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Halliday, are you done?
Well done, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner have amendments they want to put forth? Well, if not... If not, I would just like to put, bring one forth. And I thank all of you for bringing forth all of those amendments. They kind of cleared me away. Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would just like to entertain a motion to adapt the HCC budget increase request of $1,202, I mean, $1,202, which addresses all the increases, with the exception of the 2.2% increase for personnel because we already got that going on already. Come on, I'm looking for a second here.
So, Mr. Mayor, just maybe a point of process. If possible, I will just move what the mayor just said, verbatim.
Second.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
That's fine, my man, that's fine. At least it went across. Now, any further discussion from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no online public comment. No one in chambers wishing to make public comment on this item.
Any final comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Is there any other Commissioner wishes to bring up amendments? Okay. So what's the next step here? Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, with no further amendments, I believe the next step is a vote on the motion, which was to, a motion to approve a resolution adopting preliminary budgets, budget authorities for fiscal year 2021, ending June 30th, 2022, and setting the salary for municipal court judge as amended, which multiple staff have been keeping track of the amendments by Commissioners that did pass.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I think, Mr. Mayor, do we just need to vote?
Or just a vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Okay, we have another four pages to go, guys. So, let's pay attention and do the people's business. Seven, Bravo. Consider a resolution amending... Oh, we've done that, right? Oh, no. Consider a resolution amending the revised final budget, budget authorities, and appropriation of a fiscal year beginning July 1, ending June 30th, 2021, the City of Helena by amended resolution 20609 to increase appropriations by $760,000. $760,000, Madam Manager, or and Director Dan Yurson?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution amends the current year budget to increase the appropriation spending and incorporates dollars that have already been saved in revenue and ends our year in balance. Thank you.
Any discussions from the Commission? Any questions? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment either online or in chambers.
Any final comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Whoa, 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 did we... Geez, she was going on... Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to approve a resolution amending the revised final budgets, budget authorities, and appropriations for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending July 30, 2021, for the City of Helena, Montana, by amending resolution number 20609 to increase appropriations by $760,000.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Commissioners, no public comment either online or in chambers.
Okay. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk, would you?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Seventh, Charlie. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option of the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all property within the district. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Items C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. All items on, from items from letter C to K are all assessment options covering solid waste collection, sidewalks, the stormwater utilities, street lighting districts, urban forest management landfill monitoring, amortization loans used and issued for energy efficiency and renewable loans as well, the assessments on properties to cover the cost removal of snow and ice and open space. As I've been said before, these items have not been, these assessments are not being recommended for revisions or increases.
Okay, good. Comments or questions from the Commission? Public comments? Entertainer motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all property within the district.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion from the Commission? Did you include that C through K?
I'm looking at Thomas, and he's shaking his head, so I think that means we need to do each of them individually.
Mayor...
I can't see Thomas, so...
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I would recommend individual motions on each one. I apologize.
Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, it's been moved... Was it seconded? Oh, it was seconded by Commissioner Logan. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion from the Commission? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one online or in chambers with public comment.
Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner...
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Mayor Collins, can you hear me?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Aye.
I'm sorry, guys. Okay. Delta, consider a resolution amending the revised final budget, budget authorities, and appropriation of fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, ending June 30th, 2021, for the City of Helena, Montana, by amending... This is the same one, is it not? Yes. So, Bravo and Delta are the same. So, disregard E. Can you all hear me?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there...
Can you all hear me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the city clerk. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you. But did you hear what I said?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe there's a point of clarification on the staff you're looking at, the actual agenda. Item D, a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public rights of way. Do you have that agenda, sir?
D? Oh, that's... Okay, that's not what was on the... Okay. Any discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion on item 7D, if that'd be okay.
Go ahead, please.
Be a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public rights of way.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Madam Clerk? Any public comments?
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution levying an assessment on property to recover the authorized amortized loans issued under the residential energy efficiency and renewable energy loan program for tax year 2021. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd move a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the amortized loans issued under the residential energy efficiency and renewable energy loan program for tax year 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public...
Madam Clerk?
Either online or in chambers. Madam Manager, Commissioners, it appears that we've lost the mayor's connection moment.
I just got back on. I'm not sure. I apologize. Okay. Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, there is no public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to take roll call?
Yeah, that's... Yeah.
Commissioner Halliday?
Please.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan? Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2022. That... Or this... Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You take the rule.
I believe we need a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
What is hearing me, Dan? Oh, man.
I'll move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2022, levying an assessment on all property within the district. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on this item either online or in the chambers.
Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying... Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option of the urban forest renewal district for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of a resolution specifying the assessment option for the urban forest management district for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all property within the district.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the Commission? Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
I have no public comment. Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option of the special street lighting district for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special street lighting districts for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all the properties within the districts.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment.
Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins? Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service area. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service area.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment.
Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage refused for the fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move approval of a resolution specifying the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for the fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion by the Commission? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on this item.
Would you take the rule, please?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution levying assessment for improvement of sidewalk, curb, gutters, alley approaches of the City of Helena, Montana for tax year 2021. I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I'd move to approve a resolution levying assessments for improvement of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alley approaches in the City of Helena, Montana for tax year 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments?
I have no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution setting rates for all customers of the City of Helena Water Systems for fiscal year 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move approval of a resolution setting residential and commercial... I'm sorry. Setting rates for all customers of the City of Helena Water System for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to point out that these last two items, four items, L, M, N, and O, none of them require an increase in rates nor any revisions that result in substantive changes to fees within the city or rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution setting residential and commercial wastewater base and usage rates for fiscal year 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean, I mean, Logan.
I would make a motion to approve a resolution setting residential and commercial wastewater base and usage rates for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion from the Commission? Any public comments?
I have no public comment.
Madam Clerk? Please take the rule.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Lo- Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to approve the business improvement district fiscal year 2022 work plan and budget and levy an assessment upon all properties within the district for the fiscal year 2022 to defray the cost of said work plan and budget. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution to approve the business improvement district fiscal year 2022 work plan and budget and levying an assessment upon all property within the district for the fiscal year 2022 to defray the cost of said work plan and budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion from the commission? Any public comments?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please take the role.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution approving a work plan and budget for the tourism business improvement district and levying an assessment of all properties within the district for fiscal year 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move approval of a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the tourism business improvement district and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion from the commission? Any public comments?
I have no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please take the role.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Public comments? Is there anyone in the is there anyone online in, in the chamber wishes to address the commission? I see Citizen Conservation Board.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, the information provided by the CCB was put into the packet for public consumption as well as the commission prior to this meeting. It's already
Okay. So do we have any raised hands or anybody in the chamber wishes to address the commission, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no raised hands, no written public comment online, and there is no one in the chambers wishing to address the commission.
Is there any final comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We thank you to staff for all of their work in following all of the amendments tonight and the development of the preliminary budget. I'm excited to see all of this get put to work and really appreciate everyone's efforts.
Thank you. Before we close, I just want to thank you Commissioners, you know, there's a lot of work put into all of this today. And you stood up the test of time, you stood like troopers, and we went through this together. So thank you, thank the staff. Madam Manager, you guys have been great. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned.